When you say on calendar, on your outlook or?
Outlook calendar.
So that's got, let me, also it's got a message.
I was trying to use my, yeah, it's not, it's not the screen.
All right, we are on air, so let's get this study session rolling, starting with the Construction Exercise Tax, which will apparently be presented by not only Alma Flores, but Denny Egner and Dave Levitan.
Good afternoon. Alma Flores, Community Development Director, joined by, joined with Denny Egner and Dave Levitan. They're only here for the CD update portion that I'm doing at the front end. They could stay for the CET discussion, but they're not part of that discussion.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion. And with that, actually, the first slide is really related to land use activity and the comp plan question that we have for today. This is a bit of a rollover from the last discussion that David came to with the vision action items and the question that they had then, they asked if they could be part of this presentation and we all agreed, so there you go.
I think we're going to start with a little bit of overview about what's going on in community development today. And there's a lot of different projects that Alma will talk about. And I was just going to start a little bit with the land use applications that we've got in right now and then talk a little bit about the comp plan update and a burning question we have for you. The land use applications, I did a quick total and we've got in the pipeline right now about 240 lots or units in the review process, you know, where we've got the 92 lot subdivision plan development out on Rust Road that's going to go back to Planning Commission on the 25th of this month. We've got submitted the 109 unit mixed use development on the Bernard Garage site. We've got another 19 lot subdivision that has been approved by the Planning Commission, but there's a pending zone change on it that will come to you on July 18th. Your review of that is just the zone change portion, not the subdivision. And then we've got another small four lot subdivision and some partitions and some other things that are happening. So it's just, you know, busier than I think the Milwaukee current planning group has been in how many years?
Milwaukee has ever been.
Well, I would say it's probably 15 years then it's been.
Where are the 19 lot?
I started in Planning Commission.
Is that the railroad?
Is on railroad.
And is there, there's another one on railroad that's coming down the pipe?
Yeah, it's not submitted yet.
Okay.
And then there's the, then there's one out in the county that we're trying to get into the city on Lake Road, 50, 50.
Have you had a meeting on that yet?
We don't have a lot of traction from them. We can talk.
We need to talk.
But, yeah, we met with the developer and tried to entice them to come in.
For the zone change?
Yeah, but they don't need a zone change at the county level. They need a zone change at the city level. They can do that many units in an R10 in the, at the county, but it would take an R7 zone change to get that many units in the city.
I don't understand how.
They have a flexible, they have a flexible lot provision that would allow them to do that. I don't know how, I don't know how their density calc's work, but they're different. We'll check on that because it doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
No, it doesn't.
That it's easier to develop in the county than it is in the city.
Well, and that they can get as many units on a R10.
Yeah.
As it can on R7.
It should also be noted that the county staff have been great to work with through these discussions, at least the few I've had, and have been willing to try and help us figure this out.
So that's, that's not really what we're here to talk about tonight though. You are pretty much up to speed on where we are on the Vision Action Plan. We're going to come back to you on August 1st with an update on the, another work session and then hopefully adopt on September 5th, I think, correct it is, yeah. But what we want to start doing is gearing up for the comp plan update. And gearing up for the comp plan update involves the trying to appoint an advisory committee for that. And so as we wind down on, on the vision, we're going to also be coming back to you on August 1st to talk about the comp plan a little bit as well. And some of the discussion there will be about how to lay out the two-year process. What do we need to do when? What's the timeline? What are we going to look at exactly in terms of policy direction, the sections that we're going to be looking at? Tonight, I wanted to talk about the makeup of an advisory committee. And I've really got one relatively simple question. There's many ways to go with this. Do we want to follow an appointment process that is very similar to the process that we used for the VAC, where it was an open application process? Or would we, or should we do a more targeted approach at putting together a committee, one that we would identify the type of representation that we want and then recruit folks?
And that's kind of what happened with Moving Forward Milwaukee, right?
Yeah, it's, it's common.
I mean, you had neighborhoods, you had businesses, you had.
Right.
Yeah.
It's, it's common to do both. I mean, there's many, many ways you can approach this. And I think that's, that's the sort of simple question we've got on the table. And what, what we did with the VAC is we advertised through the, the pilot. We used all our social media channels, we recruited people, you recruited people. We got, we had something like 53 applicants. I think we, we had 14 appointment positions out of that. We had pretty good variety after we got everybody. We had, I think we had representation from every neighborhood. We had representation from some of our committees. We had representation from, you know, a few people were involved in NDAs. Anyway, we got, and we got, the, the good part about that was we got new people that we'd never known before or had never been involved. And now they're, now they're involved. So there was a real benefit about that approach. And we could do that same kind of approach for the, for the comp plan. The alternative is, is really trying to target that approach a little bit more and try to say, we, we know right now we've got some VAC members that are interested in continuing on and, and continuing to help us with the comp plan. But we could also seek out, you know, stronger neighborhood representation that actually represent NDAs, maybe the leadership group, a couple of people from the leadership group. We could do more to try to involve business interest from the downtown, from industrial area, from central Milwaukee. We could seek out specifically folks from different civic organizations or different community boards that, that we have appointed. Or folks that represent different diverse groups, seniors, youth, Spanish speaking folks, you know. So we've got that, that range. In either case, whichever, whichever one we would do, we would recommend that we have a liaison position for the council and a liaison position for the Planning Commission. Because this has got to go back through Planning Commission, it's got to come back through the council. So in terms of sort of subject area positions though, you know, trying to, trying to recruit people into, oh, we want a housing expert or we want a transportation expert. We don't, we don't think at this point the structure needs that because as we need that kind of input, we will create and have created technical work groups for the economic, the EOA and technical work groups for housing. So we can use those groups and tap into those groups again for that input when we need it.
I guess that works as long as those two groups are at one table having conversations. If you have the technical advisory group saying advise, 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 having these sort of high level conversations and then all you do is have the consultant walk into the room with the regular advisor, citizens advisory group and saying, here's what the technical people said. That doesn't really work.
We can invite them to any technical work group meeting or have a subcommittee that would be involved and then report back. And there's a lot of different models, but we just, we were, just in, if we go with that approach where we're selecting representatives, I don't think there's a real strong need to populate it with a single expert in each one of those groups. That's all, that, that was the point. I think we'll have those, we'll have that resource available to us as work groups. Again, a lot of different ways to set this up. So our, our question is, would you like us to start working on the sort of open application model, which would be pretty easy to do since we've got a model already set up? Or would you like us to do a little more work focusing on this representative style of a, of a work group?
Well, I guess you could do the open style. And we, I mean, we did do this to some degree with visioning and still go out and try and recruit from select groups. Because I think in visioning, we probably didn't get enough business representation. We would definitely want more business representation on this group, I would think. But I don't know that that means we have to do that model. You know, we just have to go out there and actively go get them to apply.
See where we still need applicants.
Well, and so on the, I can hand out the applications. I can hand those out now, but we do have, you know, a number of different checkboxes on here, whether you're a resident or a business owner or an employee, which was then used in our kind of evaluation and selection of the VAC. But as Counselor Beatty pointed out, there were, just weren't really many applicants at all that had, you know, kind of business owner, that fit that business owner checkbox. And so I think that definitely we could target and encourage, you know, business owners to apply, work with, with Alma and Economic Development and work, you know, with the chamber and with, with others. And so, yeah, so I can hand this out, just in case.
I remember that we weren't allowed to ask this question on the VAC and I'm still really unclear as to why, since they're not being paid. Do we get to ask age and/or race on this?
No, no, we, we, I don't think they did. Well, the question we asked, and you'll see it in a second, was about what diverse groups would you recommend?
Yes, but we didn't get good answers on that. We sat around and had to like be little detectives and try and figure out that stuff. Why can't we ask that directly since we are specifically looking for representatives from other ethnicities and representatives from all age groups?
Well, we asked that question directly of our city attorney and.
Right, yes, right behind you.
Please, sir, can you please come up?
It was not recommended that we take that approach.
Did you hear the question?
I'm sorry, I was looking at the next.
No, come on in.
Oh, I didn't realize he was back there.
So what we're working on is who will be on our advisory committee for our comp plan, which is a non-paid position. And when we did the vision advisory committee, we were told that we couldn't ask ethnicity and we couldn't ask age, even though we're trying to hit a broad spectrum of both of those categories. And it turned into a real pain because we're sitting there trying to be detectives and figure out, okay, that might mean that this person is under 30 and that might mean that this person is.
We checked their Facebooks.
We were going through their Facebook, we were doing, I'm going to jump through all these hoops just to try and get, just to try and get.
Yeah, that's what you do.
Actual representation. I get it in an employment situation, this is not employment. No one's getting paid, no one's getting any remuneration of any type. Matter of fact, they're donating their time to us. So I'm, still was never clear on why we couldn't ask those two questions.
Well, maybe we look at both sides of that too. Why, why do we really need to know that information? I mean, there are some reasons, but there are some reasons on both sides of that.
Well, because I'll be very straightforward on that. I mean, because we need representation. And it would be very easy in this town to end up with an entire committee of people that were 45 to 65 and all white.
But actually, the vision had the opposite problem, right?
Yeah.
The vision had to add in somebody older.
Right, well, partly, again, we were sitting there going, okay, how old do you think that person is in the over 65?
Because some of our younger applicants have lived through their entire lives. So the question about how long have you lived here was, you know.
That was, yeah. Whoa, that must be an older person, excellent.
Well, I mean, the safer course is to interview people and make an determination based upon interviews about whether you think that person's representative or whether the complement of people that you identify through the interview process is.
We had 60 people apply.
You have a round of interviews and if you're not satisfied, you have a round of other ones. You don't necessarily have to interview everybody.
Or you don't have to have everybody interview everybody, right?
A very direct answer to the question of why can you not ask the question of age or ethnicity?
Certainly, there's not a right to be on the committee. So there's probably not a prohibition directly in that regard. But if you want us to research more deeply whether the appointment to a committee can be based upon, for example, racial considerations, we'll do that. But I suspect the answer is going to be through the government. You can't do that.
I can just imagine, seriously, just imagine setting ourselves up for a lawsuit by not selecting someone of either younger, older, different, you know, ethnicity, different religion, different skin color, different, I don't care what. But I'm, I'm just immediately concerned that, that, that it could do that.
That what could do that?
That, that, that having, having, let's, let's hypothetically, let's say one Asian person applies and they don't get selected, but they've already told us they're Asian and they don't get selected. To me, that seems like almost walking into a position where we could be sued for doing that. I mean, help me out here because it just seems, are people that litigious? I mean.
Well, you can be sued by anybody for anything. That's, that's our society, but we are actually seeking to do the exact opposite.
I know.
Rather than eliminating people, we are trying to include people.
You can see the, the problem in making an argument that we're using racial considerations for good reasons. Those other guys are using them for bad reasons.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's a line.
But at the same time, one of the 77 year old white female applies and doesn't get selected. You know, they then say, oh, it's because, because I'm a 77 year old white female.
No, it's because there were 10 other 77 year old white females and we already had that category covered.
Well, I was going to say though, we know from visioning that it was hard to pick, you know, that was hard to. So you could have somebody who checks a box that you want to check, but they're still not your best candidate and you don't end up picking them and then have you set yourself up because you've had them check the box.
Right.
I mean, I almost do think it would be better to just plan to interview everybody. And it doesn't have to be the whole, it doesn't have to be the way we do our board and commission interviews where the same people interview everybody. It could be different too. It could be two, one staff, one counselor, interviews 10 people. One staff, one counselor, interviews 10 other people. One staff, one counselor and it's, it's 10 other people. And then, but you have some kind of criteria.
Well, I was going to say, that's going to be pretty tricky because then, you know, say the 10 people I interview, I go, they're the perfect 10 people and you are feeling the exact same way about your 10 people. Then we're.
We have nothing to.
Oh, well. But at least you come back with answers to those other parameters or relative answers. There's still going to be people, you're not going to know the answer to some of those questions. I mean, not to the definite, you know, I mean, I, shoot.
So it sounds like we want to do the open process, but target a little bit, but have interviews to help. Make the selection. Make the whatever selection of gaps that we may have with the open process and target if we need to, not in the sense of protected class targeting necessarily, but go after, if we don't have people through the open process apply from the business community, we'll target businesses in different districts in that regard? Is that what I'm reading?
I can't, why, I actually, I'm wondering, why can't we have an open process though where we, where we do recruit, you know, maybe targeted demographics? You know, we, I don't know that we've really fully engaged, you know, other than like with the visioning process, we improved on that after the fact, you know, after we had, we had set our committee. Then through the, the public, you know, engagement process, we, we established some, you know, new relationships with, you know, with, with the Latino community. So we were, you know, we, we leveraged, you know, those relationships to, to then engage, you know, with, with people that we might, would like, maybe like to see in this process apply. So if, if we're targeting our recruitment process that way, then I would expect the pool of people to apply to be a little bit more diverse.
I mean, and if we're looking specifically for outreach to communities where maybe English is a second language, you could ask, do you speak another language? I defer to city attorney, but that doesn't seem to be a protected language, doesn't seem to be a protected class.
In, in Utah, that will give you every return missionary that's ever served, which is 90% of the people between the ages of 19.
That's unique.
Yeah, just so you know.
So, well, do we want to be, do we want, before we start that process, before we send this out, do we want to say, okay, ballpark, this is what we think we would like on our committee. We would like one downtown business person, we would like one industrial business person, we would like one renter, we would like one homeowner, we would like one low income, you know.
Yeah.
Should we create that, okay, I, do you think so?
We can re, yeah, we can return with a proposal and then get comment back as to whether or not we're missing anything. And that actually also allows for what Counselor Beatty was talking for in terms of figuring out how diverse, in that sense at least, your board is if we need help.
How big and how diverse, yeah.
Well, then that's the other question, what are we thinking about for target size?
I think somewhere between 13 and 17. We had 14 for the vision group, that seemed like a pretty good number.
Was that actually, I was remembering 60.
We added, so did I.
We're not including the two of you, so it's 16 of the 14.
Okay, well, that's it, bring it down to 14.
That makes more sense than, yeah, the other ones that were appointed were, okay.
Do you find in, maybe in past practice, that the, the size of this comp plan committee though is the same as what you'd want for the vision, visioning committee? I mean, like, there's nothing magical about 14 people, I don't think, per committee. So I want to make sure that it's not too cumbersome.
Ideally, it's five.
Right. That's right.
But.
From a staff perspective or?
So best practice in the United States for boards and, just boards in general, is that you don't want to exceed 12 people. And it's simply for trying to corral a board to be able to get consensus. So, so from the perspective of when you're creating a board outside of government, you don't want to exceed 12. I think these guys have done it because we also have a large number of types of people that we're trying to get onto this commission. So I would defer to you guys, but that's usually best practice. Is that's your, your top advisory, so there's no quorum needed?
All right, and this is, this is kind of a more broad, I mean, most boards are dealing with homelessness in Portland where they're dealing with, you know, they're dealing with very specific sort of targeted things, whereas this is having to deal with life, the universe and everything sort of.
Well, but part of this too is I also want to make sure people stay engaged. I want people to feel like their voice is heard, that they're, that they're a part of this. And you start getting too big and people start feeling like they're not as needed. So if they don't show up, it's okay because somebody else is going to represent them. So it's making sure that you provide value to the people who are there, that they know that they're a critical part of the process. But I agree with you, we don't need a quorum and you can do it. It's more of a, how do you make sure, what's that fine line for you guys and you decide?
Yeah, it's a vetting committee, I'm sorry, it's a vetting committee. So you'll have focus groups, you'll have other outreach methods that will be similar to the vision, although the vision did an exhaustive exercise to get that information. A lot of it will be used as part of the comp plan update. But you can have focus groups if there's a subject area that you're just not getting what you need and then that just translates over to this advisory committee to, you know.
And are you thinking it's two years? How long are you thinking?
Hopefully it is a two-year process, that's our target.
You heard it here first.
On tape.
Two years for the plan, policy package. There will be some code work that will happen after that.
Right, right.
So that's the idea.
So that's the comp plan. So in the application process, in addition to suggesting what types of people, I think more needs to be said about what we expect, their timeframe, and not just that it's going to be two years, but, you know, meetings are maybe generally going to be three hours in length and you'll probably meet once every two months, I mean, whatever it happens to be, I mean. Give them a realistic expectation of what. Yeah, that this is, like, this is huge. It's not even as simple as when we were doing Monroe Street, you know. It's that times 100. It's not even as simple as when we were doing Monroe Street, you know, it's that times a hundred.
Part of what I had talked to staff about today is creating a job description also, so that people know what the expectations are, how you can decide.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, part of this is that we need them to go back to the NDAs and actually speak at those meetings. It's not enough just to come to these, but we need you to actually go back and have these conversations at the NDA meetings if you're not a member of that board.
Well, and keeping in mind that a lot of the NDAs are not gonna be meeting during the summer, so we've got part of a timeframe to consider right there.
Totally, absolutely. But we wanna make sure people are fully aware that this is a big commitment. This is probably bigger than just about any other board, with maybe the exception of planning commission.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. Yeah.
Well, and that's a good point, and it's not just NDAs, we probably want people who will go to the Rotary Meeting and go to this, you know, various places, right?
Yep. So as you can see, there are, yes, there's a lot for me to cover next.
Oh, it looks lovely.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, we snuck onto all this program.
Very well done.
Stole a good portion of the time.
Nicely done.
Looking for the hook.
That was good.
The hook is happening.
Thanks, guys. Food carts are now open, so I would expect a, a lunch.
And we ate there for lunch today and it was outstanding.
Awesome.
Excellent, so I didn't put that as a first item, but, uh, it really should be.
Why are you, you're taking one back?
Some she plays there.
Uh, if you haven't been, please go. We have at least four now open, uh, and the process there is that a lot of them are waiting for their carts to be, um, constructed and others are waiting for their, um, uh, food handler's license from the county, 'cause they're the ones who monitor all of that. And then we're waiting, uh, on one for their O L C C li, uh, license, uh, for the beer cart that will be at the corner. So I just heard from Steve Bartle that he approved it, so it'll come before you in the next session, I believe. So that will move that one forward. Many of them are, are constructing their carts specifically for this food cart pod, which is exciting.
Oh, nice.
Right now, we have a pasta one open, a Filipino cart, a Cajun one, and sushi burritos.
And they're great.
They're great, yeah.
It just means a diet roll is really what it means.
Yes, yeah. I've done it, I've, I've had it twice, so I hope it's something like that.
There'll be an ice cream one, a biscuits one, donuts, mini donuts, um, a Thai, a Mexican, and I know I'm blanking on one more, 'cause that would make eight, so another one. Um, and with a total of thirteen coming online within the next three to six months. And then we're planning for the grand opening with a ribbon cutting on August fourth, which will be the August first Friday.
Yeah, and the chamber wants to know if you would like them to market it and do we need any help from them?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Can we use their big scissors? 'Cause we were. We were just doing the planning meeting this afternoon and wondering, who has big scissors?
They have, they have honest-to-God scissors.
That's, that's part of. Yeah. That actually cuts, wow.
Yeah, those were.
I had those made at Saben Chilenberg years ago.
High five.
So we're planning for a auspicious occasion on the fourth.
Yeah. If they're still using the same ones, it might.
Hoping to sort of leverage the activity of the first Friday event, obviously, and have our own activity with the mayor doing a ceremonial ribbon cutting um, at the beginning of the first Friday, um, and maybe some children's activities and other types of.
Well, I hope you can.
We'll get, get touch with the chamber, 'cause they'll market it for you.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Some of it's, I'm sure, just, you know, they're finding their way, but hopefully by first Friday, they'll be able to stay open later, 'cause they were all closing.
Yes, so.
Early and there were people who wanted to come from the, 'cause I was there when they closed
Yeah.
and then there were people down at the music who said, I'm going to the food carts. I'm like, that's close.
Right.
No, you're not.
Yeah.
So we just had a coordination meeting with our management group that's overseeing it, Richard is his name. Uh, and we asked them to make sure that they're open until at least eight, if not later, on first Fridays and possibly every Friday, because their hours right now are eleven to six. And I think it's more that they're wanting to make sure that they're not staying open for, and staying idle. Uh, they want activity, so this is certainly.
Yeah, on first Friday, since first Friday gets over at eight, and you know, we hope maybe they can still open like till nine, because the people that are working first Friday can then go down there.
The time, yeah. Right, keep in mind that they did go. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot of people.
So it's in place.
Yeah.
It's good, good work, finally.
It's awesome, it's, it's gonna be great.
Thank you.
I'm not proud of the timeline on that one, but.
It's done.
That's right, it's done.
But you've got a good variety now.
So Coho Point at Keller Creek RFQ process, uh, we'll be discussing more of that in detail, but the RFQ did close on May twenty-fifth. We had our first RFQ selection committee meeting in June and narrowed it down to four out of the nine proposals and we'll be discussing that in more detail in terms of the next steps for that project. It's really exciting, things are moving along, uh, so I'm, I'm proud of that one. Uh, North Milwaukee National Area Plan, uh, many of you know that this will be coming before you in a public hearing on July eighteenth. Uh, it did go through one public hearing process with Planning Commission and they approved the framework plan with some recommended changes that you'll see as part of the staff report, if you haven't already, um, that you'll be discussing on the eighteenth. Uh, Harrison and Main Street site, uh, that is the former Cash Spot site, the co-owned site with Metro across the street, um.
That's not Cash Spot.
Texas.
Sorry, Harrison is.
Texaco.
Block fourteen, yeah, Texas.
Um, we're trying to rebrand it as Harrison Main, uh.
I thought it was City Block something.
It was, and then so when you heard from, uh, Martha Bennett at Metro, that that's one of their cemeteries, so they didn't want the same name.
Isn't it? Oh. Okay.
One of their cemeteries, so that's.
That is.
So we changed it. Again, to reflect that.
We tell me, yes, Metro, we don't care.
Those discussions with Metro continue. We have, um, uh, every two weeks, we meet with Metro staff, their transit-oriented development staff, Patrick and Megan Gia, great folks to be working with, um.
Really delightful, wonderful people.
Um, to move those discussions forward for a, um, consideration of the RFQ process in the next four to six months as well. They're waiting for our Coho Point project to kind of be at a point where they could feel comfortable then moving right into another, um, RFQ process with us. So, uh, we're not holding them at bay, we're simply staggering the, the next steps related to that site.
Well, yeah.
But those are definitely moving along, um, which brings me to the Milwaukee Farmers Market. Uh, meeting is, uh, going to be held sometime between the end of July and early August to really sort through with them what it means to be on the south end of downtown. We have some engineered, um, uh, plans, layout
Layout.
of where the hundred or the seventy-five stalls would be located and how, and where the water spigots and the electrical outlets would be located, um, as well as where the public areas and seating areas might be, will meet with the Milwaukee Farmers Market folks to go over that layout and make any changes that they recommend based on what they know, what they need for the market. Um, so those are happening, uh, and the target date for that to happen would be for the next season. If all things align just perfectly, um, we're looking at that.
Really, for twenty eighteen?
For twenty eighteen.
For May of twenty eighteen.
See, we all have to have goals to look forward to.
'Cause I thought before you were talking like, oh, it probably won't be twenty eighteen, it'll probably be twenty nineteen.
No, that's the sort of common understanding internally for that to be the end game, but again, it will all be dependent on multiple factors. We just have to work towards something, right, especially given all the construction, which I'll talk about, you know, but, um, we just wanna make sure that we're still working towards something.
There's gonna be so much going on and stuff.
We don't wanna, no.
And part of this, just as a follow-up, is that staff's committed to not diminishing this by trying to move it unless we have a very solid game plan that they can be successful on site. So even if they move and there's construction happening down there, it will only be because there is confirmation and a belief from staff and others that we can actually make it very successful in that space, if we can't during construction.
Right, as we'll discuss later, I mean, anytime you're going through that type of disposition of publicly owned property, there's, there are negotiations and those take time and development agreements need to be, so that may, may take longer, but again, it's, it's just having this goal of trying to accommodate multiple stakeholders and their needs and not losing sight of that. So that's our internal goal. If we don't meet that, obviously.
We always.
We will strive to meet these goals. Um, Housing Affordability Group, so we're having our second POG meeting, the Housing Affordability Working Group, that is scheduled for the end of July, uh, we'll, we have a few more, um, folks on that group to help me kind of devise a strategic plan based on that outline that you all, um, received last time we spoke of this. Um, anyone, I have folks from Home Forward, it's Multnomah County's Housing Authority, the equivalent of the Housing Authority. I have three members of Clackamas County, um, within the Health and Human Services, two specifically to the Clackamas Housing Authority and one who is a policy director who deals specifically on homelessness issues. Uh, I have, I have someone from the Oregon Food Bank, uh, they're very interested in making sure that there's a full spectrum of needs met alongside housing, um, from a food security or food insecurity perspective. We have someone, uh, from the state, the Oregon Community and Housing Services, I think you all know her, she serves on our Planning Commission as well. Um, Kim Travis, she's great to work with. She's doing a project on manufactured housing, so that'll also be a nice complement along with her state role, um, on that POG, um, group. So I think it's shaping up to have some really great members that could help contribute, uh, their expertise to the conversation that would then create a plan that would be vetted more broadly than that. That's just an internal working group, um, a task force, I think is, would be next, after that stage. You heard about the Milwaukee Station, Food Cart Pod and the vertical housing, you just approved and consented to that application moving forward to the state, so we, that is in process, our, um, our, uh, oh, boy, um, what are they called? Oh, gosh, I just blanked on the term for all of our taxing, there we go, taxing districts will be notified in the next month about it. It's required under the state process, um, if they have any, if they wanna opt out, that's the time that they would notify us of wanting to opt out. There's a, I think it's a forty-five day period that we wait for them to respond, if not shorter, but we'll be going through that process next.
But they're all already in our urban renewal districts, so none of them probably have any incentive to opt out, or.
Right, but we still have to notify them, yeah, and we have to have a record of that. The Development Project Manager, she has been hired. Uh, sure, she will start on July, obviously, you know the gender. Uh, she'll start at the end of this month and I am very happy, uh, you'll see less gray on my hair when she does start and is actively working with me on many of the different projects that you can see before you here, particularly the downtown and the opportunity site development, uh, work that's happening. Obviously, she would be working with me on the Coho Point, but kind of at the, you know, middle to tail end, but I want her to take the lead on the Harrison and Main Street site in terms of the next steps that follow. Uh, so I'm excited, Anne's excited, I'm very excited. And, uh, we'll have, um, additional staff capacity to help on the, the very active development activity that we're seeing. Um, parking and construction projects, so as you know, there are many that are targeted for downtown, uh, with the library, the high school, uh, private development, uh, through either the Harrison and Main Street site, the Coho site, and their, I'm sorry, not, that's public, uh, private with Bernard's Garage, um, McFarland Site, Murphy Site, those are also being discussed. So there's a lot that could happen in a very short timeframe that we wanna be, uh, proactively ahead of ourselves in terms of construction, um, sort of disruption, if you will, that could happen potentially and probably will happen downtown. So looking through our policies related to parking, as well as how we notify and do the outreach for those construction projects and notify people well in advance, so that they know how to plan for them, and then that will also get translated into projects in the neighborhoods. So the hyper-focus will be on downtown because of the number of projects that are planned for downtown, but also obviously there are C I, Capital Improvement Plan projects that would be happening and the SAFE program, uh, projects that would be happening throughout the city that we wanna make sure we're notifying people in a timely way and with the appropriate type of outreach. A postcard has gone out to residents within a three-hundred-foot buffer of forty seconds, so that one, um, will be coming online soon. We're wanting to notify them that we're gonna go through the process of hiring a contractor, um, it'll be updated on websites, there'll be social media pushes. I mean, it's, we're developing a whole outreach strategy to make sure that we're as transparent as we possibly can when it comes to notifying the public about, um, public improvements and, and private construction projects. We also have extended it on the private side to put, to put together some parameters for those private developers to also notify. You know, outside of the general land use process of notifying the neighborhood associations, we're going beyond that to say when you're going to construct and if there's going to be flagging, this is how much lead time you need to give the community, you need to make sure you're communicating, particularly with our Downtown Business Association and that type of feedback. Once, uh, internally, we've come up with a draft memo, if you will, I'm gonna be vetting that with several stakeholders in downtown, business owners, property owners, and maybe an NDA or two to just really make sure that we're covering it. I know we're gonna miss something, I just know it, but at least we've tried our best to get that at the forefront so that we can be proactive through this process and, and then we'll react later when we may have missed something. That's the intent of that, what that means by parking and construction project outreach. The construction exercise tax, you'll be hearing it in a little bit, um, I'll go into more detail during that discussion. Flower basket contract, we're working with Kelly Keener of the Downtown Milwaukee Business Association to put some flower baskets in the downtown. Um, we're just right now negotiating with, um, the Garden Quarter on the, the baskets themselves, the location and the brackets, and then working with PGE.
So light pole lines or pole line?
Yeah, it's really complicated out there. It's not as easy and straightforward as you will see in other downtowns where you really know what light posts you have to have access to and what brackets you need and height and all that good stuff. We have a hodgepodge of, of poles out there, my goodness, that has been the most difficult part of that simple line item of flower basket contract. Getting a really solid understanding of what Reba left, but she was helpful in bringing in some other poles. An intern that had worked with me last summer had done an inventory of all of the amenities that are downtown and she missed some. So anyway, we're just trying to fill in all the gaps.
Would think like six blocks would be man, no.
Exactly, and, and then it's, um, uh, you know, you have the wooden poles, you have some metal poles and then you have obviously the decorative lighting, you have the mast arms, I mean, you just have a true hodgepodge of, of lighting options and poles downtown. You won't notice them if you're walking just by, but take a look.
Once it's your practice, you'll notice it, right?
Right. Um, so anyway, we're, uh, looking to, um, do ten flower baskets for now because of the fact that the poles aren't quite strategically placed at this time and then grow that program over the years. Hagan's Grocery Store Recruitment, I'm sure you've received lots of emails and inquiries about, um, what's going on there. We're working with our attorneys on some legal aspects that we've discovered, but in general, we have done a pretty exhaustive recruitment effort with several small, medium, and large grocers throughout the region and even outside of this region, looking to California, Arizona, Colorado for different, um, grocer, uh, types that exist there, asking them to be, you know, if they're interested in this particular area. The problem that we have right now is that it's tied up in some bankruptcy issues. And so our attorneys are digging deep to find out a little bit more about what we can do, um, to make it, maybe move that along a little bit faster.
We're trying to find a decision-maker on, on the legal teams for these participants to see if we can make the case that maybe turn that into a productive site now would be a good thing for the place.
Yeah, there's one case where a former Hagan's in Beaverton actually was, um, um, I don't know what their situation was where a, an Asian grocer was able to move into one of theirs, maybe their proceedings were different from ours at this site, but ours is not simple to deal with, so unfortunately, I don't have a, a good story to tell you there, but know that we've been working to try and bring a, a new grocer. We do have some momentum with one, but this, this, um, legal complication doesn't make it as, as straightforward.
And do you think it really is the bankruptcy proceeding as opposed to, uh, somebody holding a lease who doesn't want competition?
I think it's perhaps even more complicated than that. Uh, the entities are Hagan's Grocery, which is Safeway.
Right.
Safeway, Albertson's, and the Hagan's entity that is a real estate entity. And as far as we can tell, there's actually a lease payment being made. But we're trying to determine whether the lease payment's being made by the Hagan's real estate entity for purposes of, um, having a series of available property. by the Hagen's real estate entity for purposes of having a series of available properties to go market together or whether it's being made by a bank, which is also a part of this process in order to keep its control over itself.
For what purposes? Why would the bank want to keep control?
They may think it can realize value. Maybe the lease is under market, maybe it's simply protecting its security. Maybe it's got a federal investigator that will ask them questions if they just let it go. I mean, there are a lot of reasons why they might keep it alive.
I think what we discovered through the process, and this is one of the silver lining, if you will, that it doesn't have a restrictive covenant, at least, which is really helpful. When I worked in Massachusetts for the city of Framingham, we had a grocery store go out, but it had a restrictive covenant that no other grocery store, competitor grocery store could come in for more than 10, for 10 years after they leave. That destroys communities right there when you have restricted covenant. So there's a silver lining with this one that it does not. But it has other issues, obviously, that we're grappling with.
Any idea when we might have some concept of who is pulling the strings there?
I don't want to promise anymore because when I first got this, I thought, well, how tough can it be to find the lawyer who's in charge? Say we're going to put, we have, we have to put a tentative here and that. So now.
I'm hearing a theme tonight. Deadlines.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to find out who's painting them. And I think we'd be able to find that out in a few days. That'll tell us a lot about whether there's a path.
Anything for folks that are listening or when you're out and about and you get these questions, I wanted to make sure that you had a few more details. And lastly, well, just for me, I have another slide for Sam. But master plan for Hillside Manor proposal with Metro, there's a, this is another grant. This is the same grant that we had applied for for the North Milwaukee industrial area. It used to be called CET grant, changed its name to Community Planning Development Grant. And I know that they just changed the name again and I don't know what that is. But I'm going to just call it the CPGT grant because that's what they know it as. And this is a partnership with the county for the Hillside Manor area, which is right across from Providence, if you're not familiar, 30, okay, 32nd Street. 100 units in the cottage clusters that exist, 100 residents in the tower, nine-story tower behind it. They're wanting to do a full master plan of their entire landholdings, which is roughly about 15 acres, to really start moving toward development of that site into a mixed income campus, if you will.
I just wanted to add, so we also reached out to the NDA already on this item. And we'll be going back in September to continue that conversation. I've also reached out to the school district just to see if we can have some participation from them early on. But we've been working with and actually through Lisa Gunningringer just to make sure that community voices are sitting at the table now.
That's good.
Thank you for doing that.
Absolutely.
And then lastly, a building division activity update, thank you. This is just for June. In the CD summaries that we provide you, I have asked Sam to provide you with monthly updates. So obviously, not every single CD summary will have this because it's not done every two weeks. But this is the latest for June that I thought I would share with you in advance of the CD summary. That would be coming to you on Monday, but you're getting an advance notice of this. So you can see that there's been a lot of activity, particularly around the number of permits issued and number of inspections. When I asked Sam, why is it that the number is 287 for inspections compared to the number of 141 permits? Like, who's doing this? And she's like, me, I'm Wonder Woman. I'm like, yes, you are. So I should caveat that though, electrical, most of that is handled by the county. So, but she said it was an idea of that in the hour. So it's, you're seeing a lot of activity. Denny just talked about the 200-plus units that are coming online and the activity around land use. This, obviously, this is happening now with the inspections and the permits.
So the permit stage doesn't come till after Denny's cruise done with it.
Right, but those are for the development projects, the commercial new or the new single family or the residential alterations sometimes. The total number of permits issued or total number of inspections, they may be based on land use decisions that were done two, three months ago that inspections are now coming online, yeah.
Sure, sure. I was just thinking about the new single family because we know like railroad, well, I guess railroad's still coming to us.
Right.
But there's like the three-lot one in Iron Station and, you know, there's a few others. And so they haven't just gotten to the permit stage yet.
They have not. So land use is a good indicator of what's coming online to be prepared for. But until they get their contractor in place and they start needing to actually do the work that they got the land use permissions for, you won't see it reflected in the building permit actually. And when I asked her about that number, like I said, she said that the land use reviews happened two, three months ago and now the inspections are happening. So Ms. Vandegrift is Wonder Woman because I don't, 287 inspections in a month. I don't know how she's scheduling that, but she does. So kudos to the building department. And I don't know if you want an update right here with Anderson Dieh? Oh, actually, is that hard?
That would be excellent.
Okay. So they did come in for their permits and they will be required to put in sound barrier panels on three sides of the unit so that there isn't sound getting flooded into the community. Permits are ready to be issued and they're estimating one week for installation is what I have from Sam. So things are moving and we must see.
Are they on Johnson Creek or they want?
They're on Moore Street over in the North Milwaukee industrial area. Right behind where the ODOT facility, like on the other side of the ODOT facility is there.
Oh, they're the POTS people?
Right.
Oh, okay.
We've had a number of complaints because they installed a fan without a permit. And it was outside the despo level and so it's been very loud. So we've been working with a couple of the constituents over there just to make sure that we were able to get this taken care of. Their engineering team got the permits applied right Monday.
And the permits haven't issued, so there, it's just a matter of them.
Could we inform them that it's when the fan is running on low, it's not nearly as horrific for the residents?
It won't matter because they're going to be putting up these sound barrier panels.
Assuming they were.
So even if they ran it low, medium or high, it's still going to protect the neighboring residents. And if it doesn't, we would want to hear about it, that's the intent of the sound.
Oh, we will.
I know we will. There's one other on. Shoot, awesome truth up. Something else that I wanted to update you on. Something else in North Milwaukee.
You are here for the rest of the evening, so.
You can come here.
Make up for you later, yes, okay. So with that, if you don't have any other questions related to the CD summary, CD update, I don't believe we're busy enough, so if you have, I'm kidding. No, I'm kidding, really. Construction excise tax. So I will go right into that one. The, Tim has seen the report and I had him just review something because I was not feeling entirely confident about the CET piece separate from the inclusionary zoning side of it. So Senate Bill 1533 is the full enabling legislation for the Affordable Housing Initiative to do inclusionary zoning, but alongside it have this construction excise tax, allowing cities and counties to apply that locally. I wanted to make sure that we didn't have to do the IZ portion in order to move forward with the CET. And Tim assures me that that's his reading of it as well. Because I had to read that enabling legislation at least six times.
I think it's reasonable to read it that way. I haven't looked at the legislative history, so if there's some other interpretation there, I wouldn't know it at this point. But I think it's pretty clear on the face of it, it's designed to be a standalone discretionary option.
Yeah, and I've been referring to it as 1533B. Is it section B of the enabling legislation? And I did just toss it out there with a few policy directors in the region, you know, who are affordable housing experts, just to be sure that that's my interpretation of it, that the interpretation is sound. And they assured me that it was meant to be a standalone.
So during, while that process was going on, I asked that question very specifically of the legislators and they said, yes, the point of that is for you to be able to do excise tax, even if you don't do an inclusionary zoning.
I doubted myself, so I wanted to just vet it with a few others, just to be sure.
Yeah, when I found out the inclusionary zoning was going to be virtually useless to us, I was like, okay, I really care about this city, so.
Have other cities in our area?
Yeah, so Portland is the main one. I had heard just yesterday that Scapoose, is it Forest Grove or Cornelius? What is it? Troutdale, sorry, Troutdale. Put one in.
That's the other.
And I'm sorry, I'm original now.
Far apart in the region as you can get.
Points on my face now. Thank you, undirectional. And I believe just recently did something. And so we would, and Tigard, I believe Tigard is looking to do it and is in the process of doing it. So we really would be the only city suburb for our size that has, is considering doing it. Outside of Portland. So here's the enabling legislation. It basically says that we're, as a local community, able to put in place a construction excise tax on any new development or remodel. There, you know, when you're adding square footage to an existing structure, we could charge a rate of 1% of the total permit value of that construction for residential construction. There is a provision for new commercial and industrial and there's no cap. So for the residential construction, it's capped at 1%. Or for commercial and industrial, it's, you can.
Charge 1%.
100%.
Let me just say that Portland is only charging the 1% for commercial and industrial. And I don't know what other communities are charging at this point.
If it's mixed use, then?
If it's mixed use and if you have it at an easy 1%, it's basically the entire budget.
Yeah, our lab would be easy, but what if it was, would it be, if it's mixed use and there's a 1%, a 3%, which?
Yes, it would be charged 3% for the commercial and 1% for residential. So it would be applied based on the use. And of course.
And the square footage.
And the square footage and the permit value, those are sort of the exemptions that we have to talk about today. This is coming straight from the legislation, just how you can use it. You can maintain a 4% for the administration of the tax. In fact, I assume pay for staff time to be used toward implementing this program and, you know, monitoring it and working with finance to set up the fund and just, you know, promote it and monitor construction activity as it relates to this fund. 50% must go to developer incentives as set out in section one of the bill. So section one of the bill really lays out what you can use it toward SDC waivers, which we all know really aren't waivers, you're really taking out of general funds. So the CET fund that you established would basically be that fund to waive the SDCs. It could be used for other types of developer incentives that they see fit. We have public area requirements. We could essentially develop the program to say we would offset the public area requirements. That's only valid downtown, so if a project were being built somewhere else, we wouldn't, you know, that program, that part of the program couldn't, wouldn't apply. But certainly, SDC waivers could.
So if it says developer incentives, I'm assuming that's developer incentives to build affordable housing.
So if someone's already interested in building affordable housing in the city, then they would, if they know that we have this fund, would, could tap. We wouldn't have anything for a little bit, right? So until we have some critical mass of money to use toward it, then they would just tap it. But we wouldn't be actively promoting, I mean, we could be actively promoting to developers to then say, hey, we can offer you this development incentive to a project in Milwaukee. But I think we would be mostly responding to the market. That's how I could see, but it could play both ways, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. 15% must go to Oregon Housing and Community Services to fund their homeownership programs. That was part of the legislative, you know, rules. 35% is just for affordable housing programs and incentives that local jurisdictions may want to have put in place. It could be specifically.
So we really could stack the 35 and the 50 to do a project if we wanted to?
You could, sure, absolutely.
I mean, monies from those two fund areas could go into one project that we're trying to get built, okay?
However you define them, so they don't have to be affordable housing, they can still be the incentive. So you can have, like you said, 85% go toward developer incentives. So one thing that I'll have a correction for you guys in a couple of slides down the road here is one thing I failed to remember when I was developing my recommendations for the commercial and industrial piece is that 50% of that valuation that if we apply it, would need to go toward housing. I only assigned 25%. I corrected that in the slide and I'll go, I'll talk about that in a little bit. This is what I recommend, well, when I say I, I did speak to staff and we went over, you know, the parameters of the project and we discussed what we could possibly, you know, do with the fund. And this is the recommendation. So 1%, you know, that's the maximum, we would want the full maximum of that on new residential or any additional square footage of residential construction. Or, and the 1% on the commercial and industrial valuation. The way I could see it being distributed is exactly the way they've dictated it. I mean, there's really not much you can do other than to maybe change the percentage on who it goes to. So in this particular case, the enabling legislation says it must go to 80% of median MFI or less, right?
So we could say 60% or less.
Right, right, if we wanted to.
That would be my recommendation.
And then it's really just following what the state has said you can use as your parameters for residential. So 15 goes to the state, 50% would be used for developer incentives. I said that 80% or below, if you guys want to change that, that's why we're discussing it. And then 35%, I said that should go definitely to the projects that are 60%. Or 85% goes to 60% or below. However you want to frame it, that's why we're talking today.
And so in both of those cases, there's a time commitment that it has to remain affordable. They're making.
You asked that question before and I was supposed to research it. Did you see a time limit? I didn't see a time limit in the legislation.
I recently read a 60-year requirement, I can remember.
Portland, that's what it is for some of the federal financing. In fact, that's where the thing that Northwest Housing Alternatives just is trying to get out on Hawthorne East or something, they, it is 16.
Funded in any way, so we don't, we could basically set those parameters. If there isn't anything, I see anything specific in the enabling legislation that said it just must be retained as affordable. I think that's a policy discussion for the law on parameters under which, you know, developers get this incentive.
Right.
Yeah, I would have wanted to see it be a 20-year commitment or something.
Yeah, something significant.
Probably 20-year.
At a minimum.
And then for the commercial, industrial, again, I changed it, so that's why it's underlined for 50%. I had originally on my staff report 25% for affordable housing incentives, but the enabling legislation says 50. So I changed that to 50, so ignore what was in the staff report. And then 25%, I was proposing for economic development programming. That is a big kind of question for tonight. And then I thought, you know, perhaps we can hire someone to help assist with this and maybe 25% for a part-time affordable housing or not. It's really up for discussion, these are just suggestions. And then exemptions, there are required state exemptions which are listed there. These are additional ones that I thought would be also part of the conversation.
So I had a question about the first line, affordable housing at or below 8% MFI. So if somebody does a building, it's got 200 units in it, they make one unit at 80% MFI, are they exempt from the entire tax?
No, I think when they use the term, and this is where I'm going to look at Tim, affordable housing, I think we're talking about subsidized affordable housing. So typically, the entire project would be 100% affordable. It wouldn't be that, say, classic case right now that we're working with is the Rust Road, 92 units where they're saying, you know, X number could be affordable. Well, there's nothing that could have a restrictive covenant that would say you would do that and who would be monitoring that those are affordable, right? I don't think it would apply to that. It would apply to the 100% subsidized affordable housing project that is building at or below 80% and funding.
So somebody came in and they did workforce housing. Without any subsid- subsidization.
Subsidy.
Subsidy.
Subsidization.
There you go. That was the one I was looking for.
Just subsidies.
Always say the shorter word.
They would not be exempt?
Uh, well, it would sound like they would be exempt, because if they're doing their full project at or below eighty percent, they would be exempt from one percent.
At or below.
But. Okay, you, you, you were making it subsidized affordable housing, so that's, I'm looking to find out where the actual parameter, is subs- subsidy the parameter, or is it the percentage that's a parameter?
Well, what I meant is. Here's the, the kicker, so the subsidy isn't the parameter, that's not, it was that if somebody could afford to do a project, if their pro forma said that they could develop a project and meet uh, income levels of eighty percent or below without any other subsidy, Y-Tech or, you know, whatever, I'm not saying that they can't apply for those because they can, um, they would be exempt from doing the one percent, the CET tax. But they could benefit from the CET fund to give them developer incentives or subsidies, however you wanna.
Right. But, so what I'm looking for is a parsing on that, so let's, let's say somebody's gonna come in and they're gonna do two whole floors of eighty percent
Right.
and two floors of market rate, are they exempt?
I think that would be something we would bring into the program details, like we would be willing to exempt you, so that's a, you know, an additional exemption, like we would, if you create
Okay.
sixty percent of your project is eighty percent or below, we could exempt you, or we say sixty percent would be exempt, but the other forty percent would not be exempt.
So do it as a percentage basis, however much you do that's eighty percent or below, that's exempt.
That's exempt, and then.
And it has to be committed to being eighty percent or below for twenty years.
At forty years, for a certain time period, yes.
Year, year, year.
Yeah. Okay, I like that concept.
Yeah, I think those are really good questions, and I think the statute contemplates that you have authority to do this, but that you're gonna adopt an ordinance that says what you're gonna do, and there are things not addressed here that we could fill in the gaps based on some policy.
Yeah.
Because the enabling legislation just allows cities to create their own program, and it's really, this is that conversation of creating a program, if we all decide that's what we are.
Right. That's, yeah. So does a percentage make sense to everybody else? Like if, if they do ten percent affordable, then ten percent of their project is not taxed?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Right, but, but.
But again, committed to, and do, do we think twenty years is the right?
But you don't benefit.
Both directions, twenty years, if we're giving them money, that it has to be committed to at least twenty years, and if we're saying you're exempted, does it also have to be twenty years? So it's two very different questions. But, I mean, it could be the same timeframe.
But you're getting money either way, either you're not paying it or you're getting anything.
Or you're getting help.
Yeah, it's an incentive either way.
Right.
So just be on the affordable though, right?
Just on the affordable.
Not on the ones that are taxed at the regular one percent.
Correct.
Okay.
And is, is twenty long enough?
I don't feel like I'm competent to, to realize the numbers or data or some sort of idea, I don't have a very good concept of what that is for a developer
Yeah.
What, yeah.
and what that, I just don't, I don't know.
So these are would be restricted, so like Portland is putting a ninety-nine year.
Ninety-nine year affordable housing?
Ah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So you could, wow. Uh, you could, it's sixty with HUD, um, in the past, it was thirty, really was kind of the mainstream way of doing, dealing with affordability, but then you dealt with preservation issues
Oh.
Sure.
once that thirty-year time clock expired, who was taking care of it?
Yeah, all of a sudden, all those people are evicted and.
Right, and that's what they just, I mean, that's what Northwest, they just did a bunch of those around Portland, right, where they had.
Well, this is too great.
Right, right, and then you had the, the, the same, uh, problem happen with Portland's, uh, property tax exemption program that was, or tax abatement, ten-year tax abatement program that they had, well, after ten years, then they came online at the regular tax bill rate and what used to be affordable is no longer because of tax, so.
Oh, so that's why some of them are doing ninety-nine years and sixty years and that type of thing to keep that.
But those, the ninety-nine though, keep in mind, those are for housing authority projects, so those are very different than regular.
Oh, okay. Oh, like sixty years, fifty years?
I could take a quick peek at what other cities have in place and, you know, result with a few other policy directives in the, we're gonna see what, anything here, so.
Yeah, that would.
I think that would be helpful if we're just pulling something out of an air.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Some, some frame of reference, yeah.
Yeah.
Who monitors that? Us? I mean, that's me.
They would be restricted covenants, I would assume.
Well, you could have a restricted covenant, but someone's gotta know about that it's being violated, and, so then I start thinking, well, what, what, what would we do and how long and just, I mean, I guess we need
Right, right.
something in place for that too.
You could put a reporting requirement.
Well, that's a part of the discussion about the employee.
That's the obstruction part.
Yeah.
Twenty-five percent that we may wanna use a portion of this to actually hire an MTE for the long-term maintenance of this program.
Yes, you had an employee paid for and you had a reporting requirement. Information would come in, so make a look at it. And how does it work with, when the developer sells, I mean, I know it runs with the land, so then the new owner is just, has to must abide by this for whatever timeframe, and if they don't, what if they, if they say, well, screw it, I'm, we're not doing that anymore, can we sue them and, and, could these costs that we've already paid out? I think that's a great question, is there a clawback provision here?
Yeah. With, with pain, not just a straight-up clawback.
So. For a lien.
In Park City. There is, so we actually had an employee focused on this because affordable housing was so difficult to come by and then maintaining it and assuring that it was transferred with the correct rates. Um, and I can bring that as a part of the program, what your variety of options are to assure that transfer with time, um, but you need somebody watching it.
Yeah.
And so for me, whether it's an employee here, we wanna partner with another agency, Clackamas County does this right now, so they're, they're watching their own covenants and assuring that there's compliance, there's a way we might be able to partner on something like that, there's a variety of mechanisms.
I'd be curious in Clackamas County or whomever, that, that's had to enforce one, and what the process, how, how that worked for them.
I'm gonna call Rota in Park City, see what she says.
And I can, I, if this area continues to develop as it has, I can see at some point financially for them, it's gonna make sense to break that covenant, okay, we'll break it, you get what, whatever you gave us.
Here's the payment.
We're gonna make a lot more by flipping these.
That's why I'm saying it's gotta be clawback plus pain.
It's gotta have.
So this actually brings up another question that I've been wondering about for the last two years since we've been dealing with this. Can we create code that requires rental or development, nah, that's not the word I'm looking for. People who run apartment complexes, property management companies to report their rents?
Property managers.
I don't know the answer to that.
Huh?
I don't know the answer to that, I suppose we.
Because it's been, you know, it's been a, we, we're basing a lot of decisions we're making kind of on hearsay or one-offs or, you know, we don't actually have hard data, who's charging what rents where. We just kinda know, well, three people from this complex called us and.
So when we were first doing the housing emergency, what, a year and a half ago now, April twenty?
You did a survey, yeah.
We did a survey.
Survey of property managers, and I got a.
And, and the nice ones.
Really good response rate.
replied and the out-of-statement's didn't.
Right, and, um, you know, I don't know how truthful those numbers were, uh, I was basing it on their, um, self-reporting of those, uh, rents, um, I could give that to you all, um, freedom review, but I don't think it's comprehensive in any way, shape or form.
It, it wasn't, and that's.
And what would be the purpose of that is?
Well, to have actually hard, hard data, so that we, if, anyway, we're working on affordable housing, right?
I should, you know, really.
Yeah.
How do we know we're achieving anything if we have no idea what the rents are?
Right, in terms of measurables.
Well, ensuring compliance of the law, if we pass an ordinance and we're gonna build to a standard, then you need to make sure that you're remaining.
So it's. Right, and it also gives us data, so the, the, I think the rent control thing is not dead, it's dead this session, it's gonna come back.
Right.
So it would be really great to actually have data to work from instead of just, we hear.
I wonder if there aren't, uh, subscription services that the industry uses that, uh, compile that information, and the question would be, do they compile it for the submarket, which is Milwaukee? I imagine that information's commercially available.
But you're talking about just averages or something, you're not talking about, I'm actually talking about, this complex is now charging one thousand for their studios and eighteen hundred for their two bedrooms.
Well, and I'll.
This complex is charging.
And I suspect at the bigger complexes, there's not one price.
It's all.
There's a lot of range.
Cause that, there, that might be, they're charging eighteen hundred for the new ones, but they're not charging all those people.
Correct, which is why you can't look it up online.
Right.
Which is why.
Right.
it would be really nice to have it reported once a year.
But how do they report it?
This is.
Each and least.
In my one bedrooms, we're charging tink, 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 in my two bedrooms, we're charging tink, 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 and there are this many units at this amount, this many units at this amount, it can't be that hard to do.
So. This range from this. They would have to be property-based, because every property's gonna have different amenities for why they have a certain price for their.
That's fine, I, I, I mean, that's the market, but just to have some idea of real numbers that we can work from instead of
Is this for purposes of the city receiving confidential information that it can then use for policymaking, or is it for purposes of making the information available broadly to the public?
Excellent question.
That's a great question.
Well, if it's proprietary data, they would, it would obviously need to be kept confidential, I, the only thing that I know of that reaches that level is employment data using, um, unemployment insurance, they absolutely have, you have to sign your name and blood that you will not, you know, that you'll keep this confidential, on the rental side, I don't think it has the same level of government protection, you know, protection in that way.
We're asking the question, can we require it, the answer might be different if we are requiring financial information in confidence for our policymaking purposes and our housing purposes. That might be a different answer than if we say, we're gonna require it from you and we're gonna publish your information.
Well, so what, what, what gray area do you get into when you go to the state legislature and you can say, our data shows X?
I don't know, just like that.
You know, and X is a, is a detailed conversation.
A lot of times you can get by a little bit easier if you're doing it in aggregate, but, yeah, if you had it.
Right.
I would have, I would have a lot more problem if you said property X over here is charging versus, is it?
Right. So that's, I guess that's the answer, is we would have, we would have the information in, in detail, and that's private, but when we use it on a policy level, whether it's for our own policy or to try and spur policy at the state level, we would use it in aggregate. Does that make sense?
Yeah, take a look at that.
Sorry.
Do you, so you had that data, Mark, what, and you're talking, you're saying one year or every year?
Every year.
So let's suppose that we had the last five years worth of data, what would that show for you, that the rents are rising, we know that, I don't think, I don't need to see that to know that, what, what is it?
Well, we would, we would actually see an honest, a, a, a reality trend that we could base our judgment on, so, so we, we know that rents are rising and, and certain income levels are being priced out of the rental market in this area. But we don't know exactly what that means, we, we, I mean, it, did it go up five percent of our people's ability to pay, did it go up fifty percent of our people's?
How would you know what their ability to pay was?
Well, we're gonna have to base that on the same data we're using, yeah, for, you know.
Census stats. The thirty percent of.
Well, but every single one of the.
We would know, we would know.
Responsible of your household and home.
It's just, it's gonna give us some more, uh, finite information to work from, and it's gonna give us real information instead of, again, I mean, a lot of that, a lot of that stuff is based on, and guesses.
Yeah.
But part of this is that it will also only report out the information on the ones where we have done the subsidization, where they have a requirement to hit the thresholds anyway. So I think it'll help us understand, but if they exceed what the eighty percent or the sixty percent limit is for what somebody can afford to pay at that level, they're losing their subsidy and we're taking them to court, right, so there's some of this.
Well, for sure, on them, but I'm asking for it.
Oh, going forward on that program, yeah.
I'm asking for it citywide.
I don't know if you can answer.
Just, just to know whatever apartment is charging right now in Milwaukee.
Well, that's why I was. That's why I asked the question.
Got it.
I, I don't, even if we could get it, I'm, I'm still not clear what I would do with it, other than knowing, oh, wow, that is going up every year, I mean, I, I don't know what I would use it for, even if I had access to it.
What, now you would be?
Do you know of another community that does now?
I don't, but the problem that when I watched testimony down in Salem, you had one-off people saying, my rent went up X, and then you had landlords coming in and going, well, there are occasions and, yeah, but in the aggregate or most of the people or the, and, and they had, there's nothing to combat that, there's no actual numbers to prove that the rents have indeed gone up thirty percent region-wide or city-wide or anything, because there's no actual data on it.
That, I mean, yeah.
My guess is they're gonna try and protect that with everything they've got.
Yeah.
Because they're doing exactly what we're trying to keep them doing.
Some are and some aren't, and I guess.
Then why would they wanna protect it?
And then how do the, um, I guess, I just see that also as a huge staffing, I mean, monitoring all, collecting all that, and when you're, when you talk about, you know, if you're only talking about complexes that are over twenty units or something, then that's, that's a finite set, if you're talking about every rental property in Milwaukee, then that's.
A lot of our housing's down.
That's a lot of our housing covenants.
Yeah.
Forty percent.
Exactly.
Forty percent.
Residents there.
Seventy-five, so.
I would, I would make it over, I would not, I would not make twenty the line, but ten or, you know, some, yes, a finite.
I mean, appraiser, appraisers do this all the time when they're doing an appraisal for a building or for, you know, for a loan or what have you, they'll look at what the market conditions could bear in terms of rental prices or sales prices, there must be a subscription or something, I can also ask Jerry Johnson, who I don't know. Um, hopefully I haven't exhausted my.
I was gonna say, we're gonna reach that point, I'm gonna say some people.
He's been very kind.
Yeah.
I could just ask a quick question of like, is there proprietary data or a subscription that we could tap into to get something, because I know you need that level of data for pro forma development, you need that level of data for market analysis and obviously for appraisal, so if, there's something out there that would give you a sense for the submarket, I know uh, from the multifamily side, CoStar might have something, but again, it might be ranges and not specific units and their prices. So anyway, I'll look into that, yeah, to see what we can.
Yeah, but certainly on anything we subsidize or, or exempt.
Absolutely.
Well, that, that makes sense, is a tracking device, I mean, I think that we can include that in the program, that's far easier than having a discussion about free market.
Take a look at the Berry apartment report and see how specific it is.
Berry as in B-A-R-R-Y.
B-A-R-R-Y.
Housing report, yeah. Okay. All right, so with that, those are the required state exemptions, public improvements under public contracting codes, schools, hospitals, worship, places of worship, agriculture, nonprofit care, obvious exemptions, um, and here's some additional ones to consider, affordable for sale housing at or below eighty percent MFI, again, it would be a tracking kind of monitoring need, accessory dwelling units maybe for the first five years or less, uh, Portland has that exemption, but for two years, but Portland also has over, how many, how many units of buildings?
Why would you, why would you put a sunset on that? Cause they're creating, by definition, they're creating affordable housing.
So you want them exempt complete, that's, it's all part of the discussion, the only reason why I put that in there is because at some point, maybe we wanna capitalize a little bit on it, or not.
I was just gonna say, I don't believe that by definition, they're all affordable housing, right?
By definition, a lot of them are Airbnb, yeah.
By definition.
I know, by definition.
Sure, you mean that the five year, after five years, the program would end?
No, so after, what that means is, uh, accessory dwelling units, I'm saying would be exempt from the CET.
Right.
Five years, after five years, they would have to pay, if their valuation.
Or. Okay.
So, so new construction.
As a way to incentivize ADUs.
Incentivize or not incentivize ADUs.
In the next five years.
Right, but the next exemption is important too, because improvements that are less than a hundred thousand, so ADUs, although could still qualify in that exemption,
Could fit that.
but I'm hearing that some ADUs are going, the construction costs now are upwards of a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifty.
Wow.
For an ADU?
For an ADU, so you might capture more of the boutique style ADU.
So, that then goes back to the question of traffic.
And those are from the B and Bs, or the, the Airbnb.
Right.
So, we could, if, if ADUs that were being rented on a monthly basis to, or on a, whatever, a year lease style rental as opposed to nightly rental, could be exempted, ones that weren't, could not.
Absolutely, so you could put in, if, in order to do this, you would have to rent it on an, like a year-long lease, and, yeah, I mean, that's definitely part of.
Lease.
Couldn't we, couldn't we also say that it also has to be at some percentage of, 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 of family, of family?
Meeting.
We could.
I mean, if you, if you really, if you want it to, if you wanna define it as affordable, then let's define it as affordable, that's the only way you get the exemption.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
So say that.
At ADU, or you define what is affordable?
Eighty-six year, whatever that threshold is.
An ADU.
Whatever the threshold is that we're saying, that we're giving the exemption for other things, I mean, what, what is the difference between, between the, the renting of ADUs and the renting of the same, the same program that we're in?
Of a two thousand square foot house or something or apartment.
Well, or the apartment complexes that would be exempt from giving the exemption for.
Apartment complex, yeah. I mean, because that's kind of like living in an ADU, only it's, you know.
So can I, that's a great question. I haven't thought of this as being for additions to homes until I saw this bottom line.
Right.
That's my bad. So knowing that, are you saying that for the total valuation, let's say, you're gonna see a hundred thousand dollars increase with the value of your home when you do the improvements? You're paying one percent of that into this plan?
Permit value.
No, it's the permit value.
Permit bet.
So if you're doing an addition that's going to be, or adding an ADU that's going to be over a hundred thousand dollars, you would not be exempt, but if it's under a hundred thousand, you would be exempt. The value of the construction.
Of the construction.
Of the construction.
Not the value to the property.
And what's and what's the?
Not the value to the property, is that right?
And it's permit valuation too, it's not true valuation, which is.
It's permit valuation.
Okay.
Right.
So keep in mind that when, um, Sam, when she a a lots or or allocates a permit amount for client X, she goes based on property valuation. So they'll give her everything from how much the construction will be to the materials, all of it. So if a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house is being built and that's the value of that construction versus that of the, obviously the land isn't included in that, the permit cost would be reflective of that value.
Do you know what?
The rate is.
I, because I don't, I, again, I'm sorry, I don't have a a sense of this. So, I know.
It could, no, I'm sorry, I don't, I can come back, no, change that for you.
But I'm sorry, I didn't.
He's asking what the incentives.
I'm trying to figure out what the value, the permit value would be on a two hundred fifty thousand dollar construction. I don't, I don't have a sense of how much that is, so I don't really know what we're giving them as an incentive. And I don't know whether, I'm the one who's renting it, that incentive makes any sense for me, what percent?
Right. When we had Sam before us, a couple meetings back, I asked a question that started to get to that. Um, she could do a pretty detailed thing, but it's interesting because, again, this is one of those things where, you know, if you're doing very basic construction and it's costing you a hundred thousand dollars or it's based on square footage and all these, there's all these parameters, but it doesn't take into account finish, it doesn't take into account materials. So if you're you're doing a very fancy thing, same square footage is a very not fancy thing, you might end up with the same permit valuation.
Okay.
So permit valuation is crappy, but it is what, you know, it's hard to do it otherwise. Because otherwise you're, what, making them send you the, what they actually spent at the end?
There's also from a administrative standpoint, at some point you get to where it's over, it costs staff more to look at the paperwork and figure it out and go, then whatever this value is.
Right, right, there's some happy baby and, yeah.
So actually also be careful of.
Not just spending.
Staff time to.
Right. To somebody.
Right.
Right. But it would be nice, I would like to understand, I mean, for this and other things, permit valuation.
But I don't have any, I don't have any good sense.
So it'd be nice to have Sam come. So I have some information in a nice little matrix that I can't read very well. But it's say, so I asked Sam to give me some numbers based on what commercial valuation in the aggregate had been for certain fiscal years. So in fifteen sixteen, um, the commercial valuation was fifteen million plus. If we had this CET in place, we would have had a fund of a hundred fifty thousand nine hundred nineteen. For the residential valuation aggregate in fifteen sixteen, it was four point eight million. We would have had forty eight thousand for the residential revenue as part of the CET program, just to give you an idea.
But that's assuming there are no exemptions, which pull from those numbers too, I'm assuming.
That is, that's. Right, of course.
Right.
And actually, what we did do is take out, so in twenty fifteen sixteen, we did pull that out. OLCC, conveyor and re-roofs, Providence Hospital, geriatric behavioral tenant improvements. So those were pulled out.
So they're definitely.
So we did reflect that in those numbers. That doesn't answer your question, because you're asking a slightly different question, which is, what is that amount? How how does the permit valuation get determined? And that's a Sam question.
So how how are OLCC, is that a public improvement?
So they're considered not, yeah, govern- I mean, government isn't listed explicitly, but I think it's the public improvements under public contracting code, yeah.
That's.
So we're taxing ourselves essentially is what we're we're trying, I mean, that's what we don't wanna do. Okay, so let me see what I have, okay. Do you agree with the program parameters and the exemptions proposed? And I can go back to those. And then are these, are there additional exemptions you would like to see? Those are my two main questions. It sounds, I I mean, I, there was a lot of programmatic discussion, but I think to keep us focused in on somewhat good timing. Um. I could go back to, do we agree that on the residential, we wanna keep to the one percent? Because we could always do less than that, we don't have to do the one percent. Um, and do we agree?
One percent seems good.
Uh, and then on the commercial and industrial, do we agree that we wanna place one on that?
Yes.
At one percent?
And that's one percent as well.
Is one percent?
Yeah.
Good for everyone?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, I would kind of like to see, or when I was looking at it, I was thinking like a half a percent on the residential and two percent. One and a half percent on the commercial.
And and then one, two and a half percent.
But I'm not, if everyone's fine with one and it's easier to, I'm fine with that too.
Well, I.
Just throw it and.
I I I.
But if we're trying to encourage residential development.
Exactly.
Then it's easy to me, and also looking at the numbers you just gave me as to where those valuations are.
Where the big number is anyway.
And encourage, you know, some of the commercial too. And if if it's, if we're higher than, like, we're just.
But if we do, well, that's a good point.
Good point.
If we're higher than Portland, not commercial.
Portland's at one percent, we're not incentivizing.
Yeah.
Commercial.
Commercial.
And so Portland's one percent on both?
Percent of both.
Yeah, I don't wanna, yeah.
I I liked where you were going there, though.
But we added on the exemptions, uh, you know, the ADU exemption for five years was different from Portland's. They've also had over six hundred ADUs built. We've only had three or at least two.
Yeah, but they waived the SCCs and we have.
K.
Right.
The K V S.
Yes.
We also don't have the same fiscal.
They waived them too, then.
Coffers as they do, and this fund would help create that coffer for us in the future
Right.
to address the SDC waiver requests that we get. It is a disincentive on some level, because we do also have to keep in mind that we do have those SDCs that tend to be mine people's orders.
So what if we did it as, I think there was a con conglomerated concept of
We were.
if the ADU is being rented at eighty percent, just like an apartment room.
That we would.
That that that's exempt.
That would be exempt.
If it's, if it's being rented as Airbnb, no exemption.
How do we know that?
Because reporting to the same, you were reporting the exact same way we are the other ones.
It's.
Yeah.
The interesting thing is you probably couldn't do a, well, I don't know, maybe you could, um, do some kind of covenant. When you're doing an, because the covenant would be on, only on the ADU and not on the house, right?
Why couldn't you?
So can you do that on, on?
Property.
Property deed, can you have a covenant as to one structure and?
Yeah, we've got some pretty specialized covenants and some of the F A R transfers and things.
Oh, yeah.
So I suspect.
It's a possibility, yeah, okay.
I like, I like that idea, I think that.
Yeah.
That means that if they're building them and they're gonna be affordable, it goes forever.
They're exempt.
And if they're building them for Airbnb.
Yeah. Right. Building them for profit of.
Well. We should also talk about, I mean, some people are building them for family.
Right.
And then it's a question of where the family member, right?
Then there's no rent.
So, but it also, it's how do you prove out what the value of the income is for the family member? Like, there's all sorts of weird stuff in that too, but we can work on that and we can look at it and bring you guys something.
Okay.
Well, in in that, I would consider that zero rent. So it's, that puts them in the below eighty percent category.
So with, so on, we've, yeah, the below eighty.
Yeah. Well, but you still are having to prove out the value of the individual income. Well, maybe not. No, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, that's what you're saying.
Because originally those were granny flats or they were, a lot of people use that.
Right. And I, and I.
Um, healthy generational options.
And we're we're wanting to encourage that and that, that really helps
Right. Right.
keep the building crisis under, so that, I would exempt them.
Would we also exempt, since we're on that exemption piece, affordable for sale housing? At or below eighty percent median family income?
Sure.
Do we want it to be less than that, sixty percent median family income?
By way.
An example would be, say, the the Portland Land Trust wants to develop a product, single-family home here and it's at sixty percent median family income, they would be exempt, that's what that's it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Couldn't we place a covenant to assure with the transfer of the property over to?
The land trust already does that.
Okay, that's it.
They, by by definition, that is their model. They put a covenant on how much equity you can have on the property as well. Or some of them even do a ninety-nine year land lease, so that that's what writes down the cost. Either way, it's income restricted and it's got all of the, the parameters to monitor that stays affordable.
So I think there's two different numbers, at least as I've been thinking about it. I don't know where, but I want to clarify, because it sounded different when you just said it. The exemptions staying at eighty percent as you have outlined. How we'll use it is for sixty percent or below.
No, I was saying that I'm proposing eighty, but you guys can tell me if it's sixty or something else.
Yeah, I'm I'm good with eighty as far as exempting.
Okay. Is everyone?
Because that gets us into workforce housing.
Yeah.
If people are gonna build workforce housing, I don't want to charge them extra.
Okay, so I'm keeping that exemption of affordable for sale housing, accessory dwelling units for five, so no five years.
No five years.
Accessory dwelling units exempted renting at eighty percent or below MFI.
Yeah.
And then improvements when valuation of the project is less than a hundred thousand, do we care? So there, I kind of like to know from Sam, like what some projects have been? Like some of the ADUs that have been done and and maybe some, you know, how many housing, how many housing additions have been over a hundred thousand in the last, you know, couple of years? Yeah. And yeah, that would be broader than just ADUs at a hundred thousand, maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, it's also for new construction, so keep in mind that it would pretty much capture any new construction.
Mm-hmm.
New construction is not happening at a hundred thousand.
At a hundred thousand, right, right.
No, but unless it's a cottage cluster at eight hundred square feet, then you might be at a hundred, but highly unlikely.
Well, in in that case, so there's the question, if you're doing a development and you're doing fifteen cottages and each one is at ninety-nine thousand dollars, isn't the project then?
A home. No, so the project, so that's how much they would be selling for, you're saying, versus the valuation of the permit valuation?
No, the permit, the permit valuation.
Is ninety-nine thousand, they would be exempt, under this, under that.
Even though it's one project?
So if there are ten cottages?
One developer going in and building fifteen cottages.
Right, so I would have to ask.
At ninety-nine each.
Whether or not they do case by case permit valuation, or is it the entire project? If it's a planned unit development, if it's a P U D parish cluster, then obviously it's one.
Or if there's a single property.
So it's a valuation for the entire project. Versus seeing a lot li- seeing a lot different owners, same developer. Uh, if you will.
Even with a cottage, ninety-nine thousand?
You're not getting that.
It's not that.
Yes, it's probably not, but we should probably figure out the answer to that question, because.
I'm just putting it out there, Portland had it, it seemed like.
They have a hundred thousand?
They had a hundred thousand dollars as an exemption, huh?
Was that for their, was that for their ADUs or just in general?
No, in general.
Just in general.
General, that that one has nothing to do with ADUs.
Yeah, I'm fine with a hundred thousand initially.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
What was your concern on that, Lisa?
I mean, I would just, are people building additions to their homes that are a hundred and twenty thousand and then suddenly they're in this, you know, right? So I'd like to just know what our, what our experience is with additions to homes, that's what I'm worried about.
Too. In which direction do you think we should set that number higher or you should think we should set that number lower? I'm trying to figure out where you're going.
No, I think we should not be charging a construction excise tax on people who are making additions to their homes.
Like if I decided to.
Unless they're doing something really.
Build out the backside of my house and put another room back there, that type of thing, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I have no idea.
And I think that's what Paul was going for, they didn't want to ping everyone. Obviously, there are a few legislative exemptions and then they added the ADU for two years and they added the valuation. Because they didn't want this tax to be seen as a disincentive really to.
Improve your property.
To work on your home improvements. You certainly would not, I appreciate where you're coming from and I I would be interested myself to find out what that that nice threshold is or.
Right. And it may well be that it's under a hundred, you know, that nobody's spending more than a hundred thousand dollars.
But for instance, if we don't want to ping a low-income homeowner with some maintenance that they're doing, because the valuation is now at a hundred and one thousand and they're gonna be taxed, although the tax is really gonna end up being a thousand dollars. It may not sound like a lot, but it could be a deal breaker for a homeowner
Mm-hmm.
who is already having to spend a hundred and one thousand on a, on their.
Is there an opportunity within all this to add a, something about relief for people who might wanna like come before the planning commissioner or the council or the planning director or whatever? And, you know, I mean, let's take, you know, if I added a room to my house and it cost a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Add a waiver.
You're gonna get buried.
Single.
Yeah.
Or instead of having to come to council or planning commission, because that's, you know,
Well, I'm, I expect. I mean, I don't know.
I don't see your time being spent in that administrative space.
Yeah.
But it would be more that, um, if the property owner earns less than, less than a certain amount or or is at median family income, that we exempt them, but that gets, you know, you're.
They need to have a lot. They're not building a hundred thousand, if you're barely making it as me, I'd be surprised you're putting on a hundred and five thousand dollar additions.
Yeah, it's still a lot of stuff.
Yeah. You're not making, doing a hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so to to answer your question, I didn't add anything to that house up there at all. I pulled off the stucco, which was lead painted, I pulled off the front porch, which was lead painted, I pulled out all the windows, which were lead painted, and I think I came pretty close to a hundred thousand.
Really?
Well, and that's why I was wondering, is it the permit price or the construction price? Because right now, if you're looking at a new kitchen and you ask for a bid.
You could drop a hundred thousand right there.
You're at a eighty thousand dollars for the minimalist amount of work.
Yeah.
Keep in mind that it's addition, it's not to improvements.
Well, it's, so can I?
Oh, okay.
Okay, that that is, so what's the definition of addition?
That. Addition is actually adding square footage.
Adding square footage.
Added square footage.
That's why I used the idea of if I build another room to my house.
Versus internal.
Okay.
Improvements.
So that's.
It's different than if I.
Then I'm totally fine with a hundred thousand, I think that.
Very different.
Very different, yeah.
Is, and this is a question in part for Tim, is there a acts of God sort of exemption? So the reason I'm also saying this is, you have a problem where you have to do major remodeling on your house
Oh, like a.
because you've had a.
Force majeure.
Or you've cut.
You could add that, yeah.
So it might be worth just saying acts of.
Yeah. What do you call that?
Fire means.
Force majeure, yeah.
Allow you to exempt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Reconstruct. Well, because you allow them to, you know, they get grandfathered on their setbacks and all their nonconformities if they have that, so.
Tornado rolls through here or.
Right.
Yeah.
But again, that would be if they have to rebuild.
That wouldn't be square footage.
It would be adding square footage.
Or adding.
But that's not really adding square footage.
Rebuilding or forwarding on the neighbors.
But that would qualify anyway, wouldn't it? If you're rebuilding, your square footage footprint is not changing, this is only for.
No, it would, it would be.
Maybe it would.
My thing is it comes in.
Because it's a new.
Yeah.
New construction.
New construction or addition.
Okay.
And if if there's a tornado that wipes you out, you're building new.
Oh, so you're gonna want to be careful about how you grab that. Yeah.
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 I don't need it if this is already protected, if you're right, and the square footage protected, but that's just a question.
Oh, well, it doesn't hurt to put that in, isn't it?
Yeah, I I agree.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't want ambiguity and then we have, well, I guess we have tornadoes much, but whatever.
Fire, some problems.
Earthquake.
Yeah.
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 Um. What was my other question? On the commercial, what, sorry. Do you agree with the program parameters and the exemptions proposed? I think the one that I still need some clarification is on this commercial one that I proposed.
So do you.
I can tell you what Portland did, uh, Portland did a hundred percent for affordable housing. I broke it out a little bit.
I'm fine with that, I think we need the, I think we need the programming, the economic development and the monitoring of this.
Well, so just to play devil's advocate, let's say we never get to enough money that we can use the twenty-five percent in any realistic way. Then what happens at twenty-five percent?
For which one, for the?
The last one.
Oh, they have, oh, for the stopping.
So what, you you still need somebody to monitor it, or we need to pay somebody to monitor this, right? So if you wanted to go into partnership with Clackamas or something, you're gonna have to come up with some funding to say, you watch the covenants, you make sure that any, you know, that everybody's meeting their requirements. So somehow we have to.
Well, and wouldn't you draw any kind of provision like this? Wouldn't you say twenty-five percent here, twenty-five percent here, and any remaining unspent here, right? I mean, couldn't you just create it that way, so that you're not having any problem?
So it's up to, up to, up to, and for the fifty percent?
Up to, and and designate where any remaining unspent goes. And then you don't have to.
And then you don't have to worry that you didn't, weren't able, if there, there's some category you're not able to spend it in, you're not.
Oh, so you don't.
You're not prejudiced, you're not.
Yeah, you're not tied into a certain percentage for that other piece, yeah.
Yeah.
What are we, I I lost track of what we're referring to, sorry.
So what you'd say is up to twenty five percent for, up to twenty five percent for, and then fifty percent or remaining dollars?
Right.
Something like that.
I'm fine with that, what I have a little bit of heartburn about is 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 the middle twenty five. I mean, we're, we're, if, when we go out to say, we're doing this program, you're going to have to pay one percent, and we say, it's for affordable housing, and we turn around and we say, well, twenty five percent of what you're giving me, we're going to use for economic development.
Those are.
Well, that, the only reason why I put that in there is because these are commercial industrial payers, and I want that there to be a linkage between,
You have a commercial application.
Yeah.
You know, commercial industrial, and I, and I, again, I.
What they're paying.
Right. They're helping to build business, which is their payment there.
I'm pushing a request, so. And but then my rationale behind, putting some plans behind it.
So what would that mean exactly?
Is because we have all these plans that have been adopted by you all, but no funding to implement them.
What would you spend on? To do it.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to attach some money that makes sense based on the source.
So this would maybe start rebuilding transportation systems in an area up there, or maybe, uh.
As a recommendation.
Or if we want the industrial area, do we really want to see some of those eco dish, those very cool eco district, district infrastructure improvements?
Right.
Or do we want to try and get a property that would allow us to start flipping this to be more of the types of uses that you guys want with some sort of payment back?
Yeah. So that's another part of the other residential, uh, the fifty percent, or sorry, the thirty five percent for programs and incentives. One thing that it doesn't spell out that we cannot do is acquisition, perhaps that thirty five percent could be used for acquisition. It says for programs, you could have an acquisition program. I don't think there was anything, Tim, in there that said, wasn't spelling out everything, because I think it was leaving local governments to create their own program.
It leaves a lot of choices.
So part of it could come out of that thirty five, obviously fifty percent was very specific to development.
Well, so, but couldn't, I mean, just to play devil's advocate again on that, if we took some portion of that and we bought a piece of property and then we donated that to the, that's still helping that developer.
Yes, because you're essentially underwriting the land.
Right, so we could do acquisition, we could still do acquisition with that fifty percent.
Which is a huge public benefit to projects. Absolutely, I think so. So anyway, I'm I'm not, I'm just saying that not only could you use it from that twenty five percent bucket, if you will, but you can also tap the thirty five percent bucket. But keep in mind that the commercial, uh, industrial valuation, as I pointed out.
Is a lot bigger.
And I can show you the pattern, it's, it is a lot bigger, because those are bigger projects.
Mm-hmm.
So when we do mixed use, for example, the two buildings we're talking about, the floor that is retail would come out, go into the commercial bucket and the other four floors would go in.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
It's the one percent.
Well, yeah, but now that we're changing how it's used.
That's going to be a highly different valuation, right.
There is a, there is a difference, right?
Yeah, you have to put them in separate.
You'd have to fund them separately. So I, uh, we took a look back all the way to oh five to sixteen, so ten years. And if we had this fund, it was just an exercise to kind of see what we could have had as a fund, based on the types of valuations that were happening for each year, fiscal year. Uh, on the commercial, it was at one point, um, three million, the residential was four hundred thirty six. So you're looking at roughly a one to three ratio. Again, just based on information I have, things are changing, obviously we're seeing a lot more residential development. Um, and we could have had a revenue fund of one point seven million. Just to tickle your fancy in terms of what we could have had if this program were in place ten years ago.
And that was a lot of years of hardly anything, no doubt, yeah.
Nothing.
Right, exactly, nothing like what you're talking about now.
Exactly, and so the reason we're in this for documents forum, because in oh five, it was the North Main Village, but a good portion of that would have been exempted, and we did exempt that whole project from the valuation,
Right.
because it was easier to just take the whole rather than the pieces that were considered affordable. The new Safeway and Safeway site was in oh six, so out on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, various school projects, the new Ardenfall school was in oh seven, oh eight, six, four, we're exempted.
Portion of all that.
Well, those would all be in.
Right, right, and I'm just assuming it was exempt, but yeah, I don't have all of the different types of projects.
Yeah.
And even then, even in a time period, a ten year time period, where we thought nothing was happening, there was some activity.
Yeah.
That could have been eligible for this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anyway, so.
So. Up here is where you want to talk about sixty versus eighty percent, right?
Uh, where?
Eighty percent of median family or income versus sixty, so I guess I'm having trouble kind of wrapping my head around this.
Fifty percent.
If we say sixty, have we boxed ourselves into not doing projects that fall within that sixty to eighty? Or can, do we always have the flexibility to change it? I guess that's what I'm trying to, how prescriptive, I mean, I think we could write this, it's our legislation, we can write it, how will we?
Well, if, you know, if, if, what I, what I worry about, if we say eighty, and then we go, yeah, but we'll use it to go out and get sixty percent build. Well, if a developer comes in and he's doing this thing and he's got eighty, I mean, is this going to be the kind of thing where, well, I'm doing what your project says,
I mean, on the absentee.
so you have to, you have to pay up?
I think.
I mean, is it an individual, one-off kind of decision by council, or is this a prescriptive thing where?
No, this is a programmer, these are program parameters.
That's what I thought, so if a developer came in and he was doing two floors of workforce housing, he could require that we give him X amount of money or.
So keep in mind that that's how it would be distributed, and that's based on what the state has indicated it would be distributed. Those are not anything I've come up with, that's what it says in the.
Right.
Well, but the, the state says you have to distribute it in these kind of buckets.
Well, wait one second.
Okay, not too.
But it doesn't say you have to distribute it to all comers in these buckets.
Right, no, you don't, no.
No.
This is a budget, I don't, no, this is a, you guys are programs, you're right.
Okay, that's what I'm, so such a program, almost like, so we actually decide on each project, yes, we're willing to put in X amount of money, okay.
Stable.
No, I'm just saying.
We actually decide on each project, yes, we're willing to put in X amount, okay.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
I thought you meant that the eighty percent qualification.
That's what I wanted to be clear on, because we get ourselves into these all the time.
Yeah. So say a developer tomorrow wanted to come in and was going to provide a hundred units, fifty percent of which would be affordable,
Right.
and they are asking the city for developer incentives, like an SDC waiver. We could potentially say, yeah, we'll give you half of a waiver or half the amount of the waiver, because you're only building fifty percent of the units as affordable. Those are all programmatic decisions.
But we're not committed to giving them any, right?
We don't have to do anything, if we find out that they're criminal, I mean, we could do back, I mean, we could do a bunch of different things to decide how that money gets used.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
But I do believe that the exemption, once you set the exemption, so as long as they're hitting your thresholds, then they don't have to pay it.
Okay. Yes. Right.
So that's what I thought you were asking, right?
No, no, I was asking on the.
So what it does is it actually incentivizes somebody to do projects at eighty percent or below, versus say, somebody coming in with a hundred and twenty percent of MFI project and asking for developer incentives. The answer is going to be simple, right?
Don't have it, sorry.
No. Because we're trying, this, this whole program is to incentivize and some, you know, leverage, uh, investments in your community to offset the cost of affordable housing, so we wouldn't want to stray from that. So I guess because it's all, we're not committed to all comers and all applicants, I'm okay with.
Leaving it at eighty.
Leaving it at eighty, I mean, we can always decide, oh, we want to be more restrictive, you know, but, yeah.
Well, and you can see what's coming in, it's the application, it's requests.
Yeah.
Right, okay, all right.
Yeah. Um, one more parameter under the commercial, so just to go back to that, you said up to twenty five percent or up to twenty five percent for affordable housing, but we have to stay at the fifty percent, I just want to make sure that that's clearly understood, that that.
Yes, correct.
No, but the idea was to make the fifty percent where any unspent money and the other twenty five will be spent, so it'll be fifty plus, right?
So we want to do more?
If there's, if there's unspent.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, Mark seemed to be concerned that we wouldn't be able to spend the money in the other two, I guess I'm not so concerned, I, I have faith in you all, my, you can spend that.
Yeah.
We are really good at that.
If you're doing percentages of a dollar, how's there an unspent amount? I don't understand what you're saying.
Well, so my point was, if we are saying twenty five percent of this has to be used for an employee to run this program,
Then carry over.
Yeah, we know.
But let's say we only have a hundred thousand dollars in the whole program, we're not going to have.
I think it's only twenty five thousand.
The twenty five. That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean, I don't understand why we have to require that it's not.
You can't. Then it just sits there, then why wouldn't you then utilize it to build low income housing?
So just allow, just create an allowance, that if it's not used in a given fund, it can be moved to another fund, but first preference goes to the fund that it's allocated to.
Okay. Okay. And one question for, I'm sorry, does anyone have any more for their, for our, John? That doesn't have to be answered now, but I, the four percent that's the administrative, that you can use up to, and that's the max?
Mm-hmm. So that comes off the top?
Right, and I've had, I was involved in litigation with the CET on the four percent issue. So as we put the twenty five percent for part-time affordable housing staffing, does that in any way violate the four percent cap, depending on how you're, because you're mandated only four percent for administrative. Housing staffing.
So the four percent comes off the top, so if your grand total is a hundred percent, you immediately take four percent of that.
Yeah.
Right, right, I hear what you're saying.
But I think it says, it says the max that a city can use, it's four percent of those funds for any administrative cost.
Yeah.
That's the money. Oh, I see.
Because every dollar you send. They want ninety six percent to go to whatever else.
I see.
Yeah.
So does staffing fall under that four percent?
Under that.
Because.
So that bottom line, twenty five percent.
But it said only count for the administration.
Like the true administrative cost of the program versus, I I just wasn't sure what they had in mind.
The residential.
So maybe if we, if we said that it's twenty five percent for part-time affordable house, for affordable housing staffing, excluding administration of the program. Excluding any administrative, yeah, something in effect, just so we don't run afoul of them, so it would be just.
Yeah. So you don't, you don't think it will?
We can do further research and come back with answers.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I know that's a hard one to answer on the spot, but the four percent was an issue in our litigation.
And.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you, Bill, thank you so much.
So we good on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So do we need a what, five minute break, ten minute break before we?
Everybody can grab, we've got to get dinner and.
Ten?
Oh, so do we want to see any additional exemptions, or we're good with these? I think that was my second.
I didn't, I didn't really hear any raised.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we're good for.
I'll take a look at what the other cities are coming up with, maybe there's something clever in there that we might want to talk about later, okay?
Okay.
So you want to take a break?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you want to adjourn and then after you buy into it?
Yes.
Will we go into executive session?
We will be adjourning now and then in ten minutes or so going into executive session based on.
Well, Oregon Drive Statute one nine two point six six zero two, each deliberate with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions.
Thank you. All right, we are adjourned.